Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the October meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Cannon Watson to lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, let's power heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. We ask that you use your, we use your guidance to steer the community in a positive way. And we remember that, in fact, we are all indeed God's children. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's any board member who has a conflict of interest, please disclose it this time. C and nine, we will move on to recognitions.
Madam Chair, we have a couple of recognitions tonight. The first one is for a VACO Achievement Award. Joining us tonight is Jeremy R. Bennett, the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties, to present the 2024 VACO Achievement Award to the Smile Committee of the Department of Social Services. So Jeremy, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Administrator Stanley. As Doug said, I am Jeremy Bennett with the Virginia Association of Counties, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. It's great to see so many familiar and friendly faces here. And it is always a pleasure to be in Prince Edward County, especially if I can have dinner at the Fish and Pig before the meeting. So, but it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Awards. And for the benefit of your constituents, who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties or VACO, VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We do this through many ways. First is through our advocacy at the state and federal level. We also serve counties through our educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. In 2003, we established our Achievement Awards Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. So today, I am proud to present Prince Edward County with its second ever Achievement Award. This is VACO's 22nd annual Achievement Awards Program. And this year, we received a record 145 entries, of which only 45 winners were selected from 32 counties. So it's a truly competitive program. And as only 31% of entries were selected as winners. So as I said, this is Prince Edward County's second ever award. I believe I was here last year to present you with your first. So hopefully, a trend will be developing and maybe I'll be back. Yes, I'll be back next year to hopefully present you with additional ones.
More Fish and Pig for you.
Yes, sir. So there were just several, there were several criteria that our judges followed as guidelines. Does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem, a situation, or delivery of services? Does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation? And does the program provide a model that other local governments might want to emulate? Among other criteria. So I would love to, at this time, if it's all right with Madam Chair, members of the Board, to have Kim Allen and folks from Social Services actually come up and talk about the innovative program that is Smile. And I love the acronym for that. And maybe afterwards, we could get a picture of the, with everyone just presenting the award, if that's all right with y'all. So Kim?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our Smile Committee, which Smile stands for Strengthening Morale, including literally everybody in our building, right? So I came on board as a new director about three years ago, and it was right immediately following COVID. And so our office was facing a dilemma. We have new leadership, and we're coming off of this pandemic, and, you know, worker burnout and different things like that. And so we, it was my goal to have an advisory group that would be able to work with me and figure out how we build morale and how we retain employees and how we support employees. And so these ladies, and we've had a couple come and go that have left, but these ladies volunteered their time, and they do it every single month to plan activities for our agency. We do activities that work on team building. We do activities that are for learning and growth. We do activities that are just silly and fun, that give us, you know, 15, 30 minutes to just have fun with each other and get to know each other so that we can better support each other. And so we have seen humongous strides in our office with the morale and the change in culture. Just to give you an example, I had an employee come to me, and she said, "You know, five years ago, I dreaded coming into this building. And now it's a breath of fresh air. I enjoy it. I enjoy my job." Even though it's hard, even though it's difficult, even though sometimes I want to scream, I've got a team, and everybody is getting along, everybody's communicating, everybody's working together. And so it's a really great thing that's happened here. I just want to give a shout out to our Board of Social Services. Ms. Patty Cooper-Jones is here, and Dr. Teresa Clark is here. They have been so instrumental in helping us and supporting us and getting this thing going and keeping it going. So it's been going now for three years. And we're going to keep it going as long as we have volunteers willing to do it. And I want to thank the county, too, for supporting us and for encouraging us to apply for this award and seeing the benefit that this program offers. I'm going to let Chelsea Townsend come up. She is our chairperson, and she's just going to tell you a little bit about some of the activities, the actual activities we've done.
Sorry, y'all, I'm short. So my name is Chelsea Townsend. I am the chairperson for this year for 2024. Some of the activities that we do in our office can be very silly. Like, we have an Easter egg hunt. That's just for fun. It's on our 15-minute break. And it just gives us a time to relax and get to know each other and laugh. We have started Random Acts of Kindness, where someone may walk into their office and see a nice note and a candy bar on their desk. We also do a Christmas luncheon every year. And we have also started doing a fall festival every year. That also includes a training. Some of the trainings that we have started were, we just recently did Safe Talk with Crossroads CSP. We have done fire safety training. And thanks, I think Trey is in here.
Yeah.
And we have also did trainings for just team building and getting to know each other because we were in a place where we really didn't know each other in what our jobs are in the office. Even though we're in the same office, we have three different departments within our office. The Smile Committee does polls and different types of surveys after we have events just to make sure that we've met the need of everybody in each department. And then lastly, we do try and do some community service. Every year, usually, we go to Prince Edward County Middle School and give students high fives on their way to class for their first day.
So again, we thank you guys as a board and our board and as a community for supporting the work that we're doing. It is, it is difficult work. We face different, difficult and challenging situations every day. But knowing that we have each other to lean on in these times and that we have a place to come and enjoy laughter. We say all the time, we're almost like family. We're together, sometimes more than we are with our own family. So it's a really good thing that we've got going in here. And we just thank everybody. And we thank VACO for recognizing that. And we thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Kim. And I'll just say, you know, just congratulations to Prince Edward for this. This is great. I'd encourage folks to check out the submission on our website, where all of our other Achievement Awards are posted. And we'll be sharing that with the membership at our annual conference, which is coming up shortly. So congratulations to Prince Edward County.
Awesome work. Keep it up.
Cheryl?
................................................................................................................................................................................................
Congratulations, everybody.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
One, one final recognition of the night, and I'm going to start this with apologizing to Dallas. Dallas, I had to stretch the truth a little bit to get you here. You can, hey, you can blame it on your partner on the way home, okay? Recently, Dallas had a celebration in Dalton Heights of 50 years of service to not only the Dalton Heights Fire Department, but Prince Edward County as a whole in emergency services and public safety. So tonight, Dallas, we can get you to come forward. We have a resolution of appreciation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
I thought it was bad, but my wife surprised me.
She knew about this, too.
She knew about this, too.
Dallas, this is the second time now. This is the second time she got it up on you.
I'll read the resolution. Celebrating 50 years of service, Dalton Heights Volunteer Fire Department, Norman Dallas Tinsley. Whereas since August 19th, 1974, Norman Dallas Tinsley has devoted 50 years of exemplary service as a local volunteer firefighter, demonstrating unwavering commitment, bravery, bravery, and dedication to the safety and well-being of the Dalton Heights community and all of Prince Edward County. And whereas through these five decades, Dallas Tinsley has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, responding to countless emergencies, providing invaluable support during times of crisis, and simplifying the highest standards of professionalism and compassion. And whereas Chief Dallas Tinsley has served with distinction for almost 35 years in the respected role of fire chief, leading with integrity, wisdom, and unyielding commitment to the well-being and safety of his fellow firefighters. And whereas Chief Dallas Tinsley has trained hundreds of volunteer firefighters, served as a mentor to new recruits, been a trusted pillar of support to the community, and helped his neighbors and his community in all manners of emergencies. And whereas Dallas Tinsley's contributions to the volunteer fire service in Prince Edward County has significantly enhanced the safety and resilience of the community and inspired excellence for future generations. And whereas Dallas Tinsley's service with the Dalton Heights Volunteer Fire Department over the past 50 years was made possible through the love and support of his wife and fellow firefighter Betty Tinsley. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the entire community, extends its deep gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Chief Dallas Tinsley for 50 years of dedicated service as a volunteer firefighter and almost 35 years distinguished leader as chief. And further, be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dallas Tinsley as a token of our appreciation and admiration for his remarkable contributions, and that his legacy of service be celebrated and honored by all.
Madam Chair, at this time, I just want, and members of the Board, I want to recognize two individuals here this evening. We have two interns working in the county administration and community development offices. First, Trace Grisalecki from Longwood, and also Naya Casemiro from Longwood. So congratulations, and thanks for being here. I'm walking across the yard, it's 8:00, 9:00. Just doing all night and day. One more when I went down to the garage in the afternoon. This goes on 24 hours, seven days a week, and something's gotta be done. There's no law. Animal Control said there's nothing they can do about it.
What's your address, sir?
My address is 1242 Millbank. All you have to do is come down my driveway, it'll bark. And it barks, cars going up and down, not all cars, some.
Campbell, you used to own this property?
It's on his property, the neighbor's.
And your name, sir, please?
They really get riled up about 9:30 last night. They started at 9:30, and about 1:30, I put headphones on. Woke up at about 5:00, they're still going at it. Walked out to my car, parked, can't do anything.
Your property used to be owned by Mr. Campbell? Is that correct?
I don't know. I know the guy I bought it from was in the Navy. He was the second guy there. I can't remember, Ludgate? Gary Ludgate is who I bought it from.
I live in that community, I'm trying to figure exactly where your place is.
I've got a motorhome sitting off, maybe you seen it back there.
If you're going Millbank.
You know where Tommy's is, right? Repair shop?
Yes.
You're going up toward, I guess that's westbound, I'm on the left a quarter mile.
I got you. Before you get to Dick Fleming's old place? I got you.
I'm a veteran. I had a training down at Fort Benning, and one of the things they talked about was psychological warfare and torture. The first thing he brought up was the 38th parallel in North Korea. We put speakers, it's a 160-mile border, 2.5 miles wide, and they put speakers, horn speakers up, cranked it up, and it's been going on for almost 70 years. And the first thing, Kim Jong, whatever his name is, asked Trump, can you turn the music off? That's the first words out of his mouth. You can look up what noise does to someone. My only option is to move. And I've got the money to move and rent that. I got a guy in Arkansas, his friend, said he can rent it through the government, their press for housing for families. Said there's two houses there, I can rent it and leave, or... Said there's a noise ordinance out there, I saw it, Sarah Puckett. She said, you can't play loud music, you can't move boxes, and you can't have a loud muffler, but dogs aren't included. And I'd make noises, noise.
Can't get used to it.
Oh, hell no. Can't get used to it. When I was in the Army, I fractured nine vertebraes in my back, and two in the neck, and I've had surgeries. So I have to exercise. Every day, I go down to the trail and ride, just getting tall. The neighbors' position is, the conversations I had with them is, it's our property, we'll do what we want. Because Animal Control's been out there, because there's one dog that runs out after UPS, and they told him, you can't let the dog run loose. After they leave, he keeps it up for two or three days, and he lets it out.
Sir, could we have your name and address again so we can look into this?
Pardon me?
Could I get your name and address so we can look into?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Raymond Barberia.
And your address?
1242 Millbank Road, Pamplin, Prince Edward, Pamplin.
Thank you so much.
That's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. I can just confirm Supervisor Watson that the ordinance does not currently address animals in the noise ordinance. I think the county Board of Supervisors a handful of times over the years discussed that issue and chose not to remove it, as in there previously. It is, I know having run Animal Control myself, being responsible for it, it's difficult, it's subjective. The dog barks three times, the dog barks for three minutes, the dog barks for 30 minutes. Everybody's tolerance level's a little bit different, but, you know, if the board later wants us to come back and look at the issue, we can certainly do that, but in the meantime, it's not something that our Animal Control staff can address.
We can compile the history and bring it back to the chart of here. And we can use research on what other jurisdictions are doing.
I would be curious to what other jurisdictions, I mean, that doesn't sound... I don't know anybody who would want to live near that. I mean, obviously, we're taking it at face value that it's persistent. I mean, he's told us, I mean, that just sounds brutal. Obviously, it would be, there would be some pushback, probably on implementing it. The guy, he seems like he needs some relief.
The next person who wanted to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Guy Carrington. I live at 215 Woodland Place here in the town of Farmville. Okay? I have some questions concerning the financing of the school renovation and the cost. Amherst County is doing a monster major renovation of their high school, adding a 1,200-seat auditorium on and on, and they're spending $32 million. I'm just wondering, where did the number come up? I've asked my board member. The other thing is, is concerning me was, and I don't want anybody to think that I'm poking at them, I have a 401K plan with Davenport. My wife uses Davenport as her brokerage. But I'm gonna ask this to Mr. Watson. I know you reclusive yourself when you voted, because Davenport is gonna help with the financing. But are you gonna directly or indirectly monetarily benefit?
No.
Even if you sell the bonds?
I mean, I won't sell the bonds.
Okay, that's an answer, okay. And you're not gonna indirectly do bonuses or anything like that?
You know, I guess you could say that, I don't think that you could say that there would be a material impact. You know, if I got a dividend from my stock that I own in the company, you know, would 10 bucks be part of this? I don't know. I don't think so at all.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but here's what I'm gonna propose to the board. Since you have a member on the board that works for Davenport, maybe you should use other financial institutions to do the finance. If he rolls off, you can go right back on to using Davenport again. And again, I have a 401K plan through Davenport, and my wife has her brokerage account both in Lynchburg.
The use of our arm of that company that we don't know, we don't have much in common, we don't really know how they do things. I know the chief pretty well, but their relationship with Prince Edward and the town of Farmville and the county of Nottaway long predates my seat here, and I imagine it will go on a long time after I leave. I know David's wife is a big wheel at Benchmark, that's our banking partner. We buy a gazillion light bulbs from Harrison's family. I'm sure that Lou has done some work through the municipalities around here. I don't think that you can avoid these kind of things, but our company, the municipal finance arm of our company deals with most municipalities in Virginia.
So let me ask the question. If you don't shop around, how do you know you're getting the best price?
Well, I'm sure these people shop around for this kind of thing, but I don't, you know...
You have to go through a public procurement process, and we ride another county that has. I will say that one of the other entities that performs, this is not a banking institution, it's financial management and finance advisory services, is the Virginia Local Government Finance Officers Association, or VML VACO Finance. I'm the vice chairman of that board. That's the other entity that's out there. Of course, I don't get paid to serve on the board, but there's only, there are very few entities in Virginia that do finance advisory services to localities. Sir, I think we, 2008, we've had a relationship with Davenport, which, you know, obviously far exceeds my time here, most of the members of the Board of Supervisors, including Mr. Watson. So, you know, I think...
Can we see from our perspective that it might look like a conflict of interest?
You know, I think, as Mr. Watson mentioned, you know, Benchmark is our primary bank. Mr. Townsend, superintendent of the regional jail, which gets funded by the county, his wife works for the school system. Mr. Jones, his family is in business in town. There are lots of conflicts in a small community. The good thing is, the Conflict of Interest Act of the state of Virginia provides a framework for us to work around those issues, to make sure that nobody is benefiting unfairly. For Mr. Watson, he cannot participate at all in the conversation for the selection of their services. He can't participate in any particular financing, so that's why Virginia has the Conflict of Interest law to protect the citizens and localities.
I'm aware of the Conflict of Interest law, okay? I'm just asking. That's what we're supposed to do. You guys work for us, we elect you, we hire you, four years, whatever, and that's just what I'm doing. Okay? All right? Thank you.
Mr. Carrington, just before you go, can I, a quick question about Amherst. What are they doing, you said they're adding on, you know what the square footage or anything is?
They're adding on 12 classrooms, they're adding on a 1,200-seat auditorium. How do I know this? I was just up there doing a flu clinic. They're also renovating, oh, they're also adding a new cafeteria. They're renovating the old cafeteria, they're renovating the, oh, and they're putting in a band room, a new band room. They're doing a bunch of renovations. Let me tell you, this is a big deal. And...
What was the price?
$32 million. And I mean, this is huge. When I say this is huge, this is huge. I used to live in Lynchburg, I lived there for 38 years, I worked in Amherst for 17 years, I know some of the members on the Board of Supervisors. It just struck me that the price tag was just over the top.
Do you know by any chance who their contractor is?
I don't know right now. I could find out.
Well, if I can, Mr. ...
Y'all can find out, too.
I just want to explain that, you know, I think previous to your concern was about the estimates. The bids came in this week. Low bid's $38 million, next bid's $41, third bid's $42. Those two, two of the three firms are Lynchburg firms. English has got the apparent low bid, and Jamerson's got the second lowest bid. So it's, you know, this is a, our elementary school project is a sizable project, you're demolition of two buildings, building a whole new wing and section. You're doing heavy renovation, light renovation, medium renovation, you're redoing the parking lot and the entrance. The bid is the bid, you know, I, you know, that's the good thing is, when you have to go out to bid and you're not doing a PPA, you get to see all the bids lined up, and, you know, I'm glad the two Lynchburg firms put in, but, you know, it's, unfortunately, that's the market we're in.
I mean, it is. It's a lot of money.
Lou, yes.
Yes, Lou.
To compare apples to apples, you've got a set of plans probably this thick that each project is being used. And the first thing that went to my mind, an auditorium is an open air area. If you compare that to 38 classrooms, 40 classrooms, that bid is gonna come down sizably because you don't have the infrastructure on the inside. So that may be where the difference in the money is. I don't know. If you take one set of plans and go page to page, and then you list the materials, what it's gonna take to build it, and then your labor to do it, you'll see where the money comes up.
I just want y'all to be good fiduciary, fiduciaries. That's what I want. I mean, if y'all was handling your money, you'd want me to be the same way, right?
That's right. Absolutely.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly. Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, Board of Supervisors, comments. Lou?
Glad to see everyone, and congratulations to Dallas for his 50 years. I'm sorry, we had to sneak one more by you. Also, I would like to take a moment to thank the board members and the staff at the county and all of my family and my friends that have really helped me in the last few weeks with my health situation. I can't pray, it's UVA Hospital enough, they looked after me, and I thank everyone so much.
Dr. Cryer? Good evening, everyone. Glad you came tonight to share the events with us. Congratulations, Dallas. You're doing an awesome job. Thank you. Hannah?
I just want to say thanks for coming out and participating. A lot of, I know a lot of you are like me, are thinking about the people in Florida and western North Carolina and upstate South Carolina and southwest Virginia. Another hurricane coming. It's just got a lot to be thankful for in our region, obviously, and, but boy, what a tough time others are having, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers and your, think about donations to things that can help.
Mr. Beal?
Go ahead, see y'all here, nice weather out there. It's kinda hard to come to Lake, it's not that good out there. We here. lot and the entrance. The bid is the bid, you know, I, you know, that's the good thing is, when you have to go out to bid and you're not doing a PPA, you get to see all the bids lined up. And, you know, I'm glad the two Lynchburg firms put in, but, you know, it's, unfortunately, that's the market we're in.
I mean, it is. It's a lot of money.
Lou, yes.
Yes, Lou.
To compare apples to apples, you've got a set of plans probably this thick that each project is being used. And the first thing that went to my mind, an auditorium is an open air area. If you compare that to 38 classrooms, 40 classrooms, that bid is going to come down sizably because you don't have the infrastructure on the inside. So that may be where the difference in the money is. I don't know. If you take one set of plans and go page to page, and then you list the materials, what it's going to take to build it, and then your labor to do it, you'll see where the money comes in.
Yeah, I just want y'all to be good fiduciary, fiduciaries. That's what I want. I mean, if y'all was handling your money, you'd want me to be the same way, right?
That's right.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly. Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, board of supervisors, comments. Lou.
Glad to see everyone, and congratulations to Dallas for his 50 years. I'm sorry, we had to sneak one more by you. Also, I would like to take a moment to thank the board members and the staff at the county and all of my family and my friends that have really helped me in the last few weeks with my health situation. I can't pray, it's UVA Hospital enough, but they looked after me, and I thank everyone so much.
Dr. Pride.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you came tonight to share the events with us. Congratulations, Dallas. You're doing an awesome job. Thank you.
Hannah.
I just want to say thanks for coming out and participating. A lot of, I know a lot of you are like me, are thinking about the people in Florida and western North Carolina and upstate South Carolina and southwest Virginia. Another hurricane coming. It's just got a lot to be thankful for in our region, obviously, and, but boy, what a tough time others are having, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers and your, think about donations to things that can help.
Mr. Beal.
Glad to see all of y'all here. Nice weather out there. It's kind of hard to come to Lake, it's not that good out there. We here. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Jones.
I echo previous comments, and thank you, sir, for your many years of service. We appreciate it. And appreciate each one of you being here tonight to help us, to participate and to speak into the situation and provide different perspectives for us. Thank you for that.
Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, thank everyone for being here, and I echo everything being said. Lou, good to see you. God bless you, hear you, you're here. Dallas, congratulations, 50 years. That's a lot of years. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being able to be here, and thank everyone else for being here and taking a part in our local government.
Mr. Amherst.
I have to echo what most everyone has said here this evening. Dallas, thank you for your time, your effort, thanks for what you've given to the county, to the community and everything else. Thank you very much. Lou, glad to see you, glad to see you here as healthy as can be. Our meeting kind of started off a little different, but that's what, that's what this is about. So we appreciate that, as well as everyone who's attending for information, whatever else. Unless the people in the community let us know, let us know what's going on sometimes, we don't know about the small things, so thank you.
And one thing before you go, I want to recognize this smile from DSS. I mean, that was awesome. Now, my daughter was a cheer, but that's okay. But, but, that's awesome though.
That's conflict of interest.
But, but, you know, the reason I said it is because, being an employer, employees is a challenge, to hire good employees. I mean, pretty much every business I hear is faced with the challenge of vacancies. And if you've got a committee there that, that's a team building and, and, and improving recruitment and retention, that's awesome.
And went from having a dreadful place to work to a really good place to work.
That's right. Now also being recognized on the level that they've been recognized, that's awesome. So I just didn't want that to go without being noted. And thank Dr. Clark and Chair, Madam Chair Jones, and thank you for the great, excellent work you do to support them.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for your being here tonight. It is really great to see smiling faces. It is great to see our citizens, our employees being honored. It is truly great and a blessing to see Lou here tonight. We're very thankful. I still say you should have stayed at home and got some rest, but anyway, I'm happy to see you. Mr. Tensley, thank you for 50 years of service. That is amazing. And I'd like to say thank you to this board of supervisors. I think you're an excellent group of people to work with. And again, I say thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent agenda.
I'm sure I'll make a motion that it be approved as presented unless there's someone that has something additional to mention.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It has been motion and properly seconded. Lou?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Amherst?
Yes.
And Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. Thank you. Okay, business partner updates.
All right, hold this second. All right, as you know, Madam Chair, we've been, adopted a new program where we're recognizing local businesses that contribute to the community, and I'm very pleased to introduce Ms. Ilsa Lersler, founder and principal of Letterpress Communications. Letterpress has been a fixture in the community for a number of years, but since 2020, they have been assisting Prince Edward County in, I'd say, increasing our messaging to the public, helping us with social media, helping us with the annual report that'll be coming out in tax bills this week. That'll be our third edition of that. And really, I think, helped us engage the public where they're at. So thank you for that, Ilsa, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. I appreciate it. It's a joy to be here. I have a link to our 2023 Impact Report to hang, hand out to you guys when I'm done. Letterpress is for-profit, but we call ourselves a social enterprise. We're a wannabe B Corp. B Corps take a lot of time and energy to become, so we're not quite that yet. I think I know most of you guys. I was born and raised in Rice, near the Three Crosses on 460, if you know where that is, and came back about 12 years ago and started out being a reporter at the Farmville Herald after graduating from Longwood University. I sat next to Rob Chapman's seat back when he was covering Prince Edward County, and I have to say, I feel very blessed to be active in the county at this time with this leadership. I feel like in the last few years, Prince Edward County has been so much more proactive than it has been in the past from my perspective as a reporter or otherwise. Some things that I really appreciate is just y'all doing a strategic economic development plan. I think that's the first time the county has done that. I think it's really important that that exists and is a thing. The hit park is exciting to me. I've been coming to some of the comp plan meeting input and seeing that business retention and expansion is a priority in, in terms of economic development really made me happy. And then also, just like the water access issues out with Sandy River Reservoir, it was an honor to be able to speak on behalf of the county at the DEQ hearing. But just that proactivity even around that, it just makes me excited and proud to be a citizen and a resident of the county at this time. I'm proud to share that Letterpress is the first for-profit sponsor of the Verita, Virginia's Heartland Regional Economic Development Authority, and I'm excited that the county has also partnered in that effort. In our rural communities, this is not in my notes, but I'm going to go extemporous for a second, we have a real problem of scale and capacity. Y'all have the same amount of unfunded mandates that come down from the state as Manassas or Loudoun County or wherever he's going to say, that you have to figure out how to deal with in your limited resources. So I'm really thankful that y'all are committing to regional efforts like the Verita that allow you to pool resources instead of trying to do individual things alone. I think it's really important, and sometimes we can be a little competitive and siloed in our different counties, and I think it's important that we can't afford to be competitive. We have to be willing to work together and pool those resources. The moment we get prideful and think we can do it on our own is the moment we're probably going to trip over our shoelaces. I also am thankful to be able to help the county with its messaging and communications. When I was at the Herald, I kind of saw the decline in subscriptions, and I knew I wanted to help my community tell its stories well. That's one reason I stepped away. I meant to be a solo PR consultancy, and turns out there was a bigger need than I thought. So here we are with a marketing agency with 11 employees and 55 clients. I have to say that the majority of our clients are outside of Farmville, but the largest concentration of our employees is here in town. So in a lot of ways, we are a traded sector for this community. We're bringing outside dollars in to pay for jobs that are paying for real estate taxes and other things, and I'm very proud of that. I really want us to be a strong economic driving force for our community. Not only that, but we actually get to help the county with its communications, and that makes me really happy, too. Sometimes it can feel like that regions are intentionally trying to hide information, but I know this county is trying intentionally very hard to get the word out, to encourage participation, to make sure people are showing up for the comp plan and things like that. And I think it's just really important, and it makes me happy. I wanted to give y'all just a little update, I have like two minutes left, on where Letterpress is right now. I started the company almost 10 years ago. Like I said, the majority of our clients are now outside of town, but most of our employees are in town, and it's been amazing to be on this journey. As most of y'all know, I'm actually stepping back from the company. I'm remaining owner, but I've actually hired our first CEO. And so Alex Veatch will be running the company, and Lindsay Blakely, our chief operating officer, will be at the helm as well. And I'm very thankful to have such strong, competent women able to come in and take the charge for me. I want to encourage this board to not take business retention and expansion lightly. I know that there are big sexy projects out there, and I think getting a data center would be amazing. I'm all for it. But we need to have a place where people want to live, right, want to hang out, and that includes having the small jobs, the businesses, the coffee shops, you know, all those other amenities that make sure that those few data center workers actually locate here to live, right, instead of going to Chesterfield or Charlottesville or some other place. I was glad to see it in the comp plan, and I have to say, my company came out of a small business development center. I did an eight-week startup course. It would not exist without it. That's where I learned accounting. I have a consultant I met with once a month for several years, and I still meet with him once a quarter. He's helping me with this transfer from CEO. So it's been really critical to me. It's been about 50 years ago that Farmville Wholesale Electric, Apomax River Company, and Greenfront Furniture all started, somewhere between 50 and 55 years ago, roughly that same time span. Can you imagine those businesses, this town, this county, without those businesses? The jobs they provide, the resources they bring. Business retention and expansion is like planting a tree. When's the best time to plant a tree? Greenfront, 50 years ago. When's the next best time? Now. I'm glad that Letterpress can be part of that story, but I want to encourage y'all to continue thinking about that story and what we're doing to encourage that type of growth in our community. Because it might not be the big win right now, but in the long run, it's the slow growth and the people that are really committed to the community, that's going to help us flourish.
I just want to say, I've always enjoyed listening to you present. Come to Redory sometimes, Chamber of Commerce. She's one of these people that if they, all right, how do we get, when you do a web search and you want to find the Manor Golf Club, how do we get it to come up first? So she found somebody that's good at that, you know. Whatever they do, they find somebody that's good at that thing. And I appreciate all the encouragement, and, yeah, proud of your success, and it's awesome. Nice to see you adding to the team. You know, we see pictures, pictures of people in the paper or on the website that we all know, that we all know are good at something, and then you're, and they're going to go work for you, so that's great stuff.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I got excited. I went ahead and looked at the link that you're about to pass out, and it's, it's encouraging to see this kind of growth and expansion and marketing of what everybody here knows is so great about this town and this community, and the different aspects that make us proud to call this home, and Letterpress helps us communicate that to the outside world. So thank you for doing that well.
That means a lot. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a sticker.
Madam Chair, members of the board, next up, we have three community partners presenting tonight. First would be Jen Cox Carney from Virginia, excuse me, Farmville Area Chamber of Commerce. And I know she's filling in for Ann Tyler Pollak, who is expecting...
Imminently on maternity leave, any moment now, so I will do my best. Thank you, Mr. Stanley, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. It's, it's good to be back. Some of you I haven't seen in a while, and maybe a few of you I haven't had a chance to meet. In my day job, I work at Longwood University under the Office of Community and Economic Development, so it seems like a natural fit, and I'm very excited to serve as chair for the Farmville Area Chamber of Commerce this year. I have big shoes to fill, following the footsteps of one superintendent at Cumberland County Public Schools, Dr. Chip Jones, but he tells me I do okay, and maybe I could be a teacher. I have that way. I'll ask Dr. Pride later if she thinks that's a good or bad thing. But just wanted to bring a few highlights to you all, mostly talking about partnerships. And I think Ilsa, I love listening to Ilsa speak as well, did such a great job about kind of economically and needing to really plant those trees. And something that we've been doing at the chamber is looking at our goals, with the biggest thing being that all of our chamber members find value in what we're doing. We have 290 approximately members. For being a rural chamber, maybe what many would consider across the state a small chamber, I will say, we punch above our weight class. We are out there all the time, doing events, doing activities, figuring out what it is that our members need. And so our goal, whether it's staff or board members, is to make sure we're talking individually to each of these businesses to figure it out, because economic development is at the heart of, right, having a strong community. So whether it's potential new businesses coming in, talking to businesses that have been here a while, maybe reconnecting them with different resources, we really want to do a lot of that. Some of how we do that actually comes through a lot of our events and programming. I thought I'd highlight a few that might be helpful for you all or your constituents. Just last month, we hosted the Leadership Farmville Youth Summit. Our focus was on civic engagement, so maybe we'll have some future board of supervisors. So we had high school students, approximately 60, from Cumberland County, Prince Edward County, and Fuqua, out, hosted out of Hampton, Sydney, and we spent the day talking about how to be engaged, what does that look like, what does engagement mean to you, and what will it mean in the future? We had a lot of great area partners, including the Virginia Credit Union, Southside Electric Cooperative, Benchmark Community Bank, A Great Escape, Spilon, and then our keynote, if you have not heard him speak, Hampton, Sydney's head basketball coach, Caleb Kimbrough, and a really engaging speaker. We had a lot of fun connecting with our high school students. So hopefully, we'll continue to do more of those. The civic engagement focus was a lot of fun for us. Previously, we've had a couple of folks in this room work with us on what's the future of entrepreneurship in the community. So we're always looking at different topics for this youth summit. We also want to make sure we retain our teachers, right? So we also hosted in partnership with the LCVA, a reception for our new and returning teachers. So our new teachers got goodie bags. We want to make sure that they're feeling supported, embraced, and welcomed by our community. Make sure they know what resources are here, right? We want them to stay and be active members, much like a lot of us know, right? There's so much to do in this community, we just have to make sure they can find it. So we had a lot of great participation that night, good partnerships, and this is a program we've been doing for a while that we want to continue to do to benefit the entire region. Our membership luncheons, we try to have a diverse cross-section of speakers for that, so we're always interested in figuring out, what is it that the community needs to know about? Sometimes it might be a new program coming in, sometimes it might be getting an update from one of our local stalwarts. So, for example, next Monday, Greenfront, Dan Crowley will be coming to give us an update, right? We all think we know Greenfront, but do we, right? Maybe we haven't been in the buildings in a while, maybe we haven't heard what he's been up to and what the future looks like. So our goal is to make sure that all of our local business community is connected and knows what's going on. And probably one of our favorite new events coming up, so fingers crossed we'll see you all soon, is partnering with Prince Edward, and thank you to Mr. Stanley, Chelsea White in Economic Development Office, we're going to host the inaugural Farmville Wedding Expo. So Sunday, December 1st, we really want to work with the county to double down on this region being a wonderful destination for weddings, and I will personally say, we have a family friend, they live in Hampton Roads, they picked Farmville to get married, beautiful venue, beautiful atmosphere. So even though folks were flying in from all over, they were here for the wedding, and that's where she wanted to be. So I know it's happening, I think you all know, and so we're really appreciative to all the work of the county so far, and we're really eager to see how else the chamber can continue to support some of these economic development efforts. We also have some of our fun stuff, our holiday house tours, looking at our future leaders in spring 2025 with Leadership Farmville, so we're opening applications for that. And then, of course, our business awards. We brought that back last year, year after a COVID hiatus, and we had reached our maximum capacity for the fire marshal. So good news, everyone wants to celebrate our business community, so that last Thursday in February, we're going to do it again and continue to make it a wonderful celebration. So thank you all for your encouragement. I think you all know this, but we can't be the strong chamber that we are, the rural chamber that continually punches above their weight class, finds new activities and events, pulls in these businesses without the support of this wonderful community. So I hope it's helpful to get kind of a higher level update on some of the events and activities we're doing, but if anyone ever has any questions, call our office. And again, as chair this year, I'm always happy to meet and make sure that if you all have any questions, you're getting them answered, but we love showing off this community and we love when people are here. So thank you again, and thank you to Mr. Stanley for all your work and support in giving updates monthly to our chamber board members and helping ensure that there's plenty of communication in both directions. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Sharon Stitler from the Southside Virginia Family Next, we have Sharon Stitler from the Southside Virginia Family YMCA. She is the Vice President and Member Experience and Corporate Partners.
I'm going to bring along moral support. Dr. Chuck Taylor, he is our Board of, he is the Director of our Board and the President of our Board, and I wanted you all to know that, because we've been really great, our Board's been awesome. We have Ann Tyler Pollak on that Board as well, and Tom Angelo, and such a good group of people in the community. I'm going to talk a little bit about the why today and what a why means to the community. Right now, I am at the YMCA of Central Virginia. We do have a management agreement with the Southside YMCA, and we have for a while. We have recently gotten a new CEO. His name's Mike Cassidy. He's from East Bay, California, and he is gung ho on helping the communities thrive. He's taken us back to some simplicity. Whys can't be everything to everybody, but we can do three things well: healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. And if we back up and look at those three pillars and ask our community what we can do in that community to collaborate and support the community, then we're going to be the why that we're meant to be. And so that's why I'm here. I'm here to tell you a little bit that we know that history has been a little rocky with the why, that it, you know, started off in some debt, and a lot of times, the debt was hard to, you know, we're going to the community asking for money. Now we're at a stable place where when we come to the community, ask for money, it's not to keep the lights on. It's to help the community. How awesome is that? So we have turned a page. We have great leadership there. Tiffany G. is just such, just a breath of fresh air. She loves this community so much, and we have Arjane White that's there. We just hired Betsy Leonard to run our aquatics program, and we know that she's at Hampton, Sydney. We have partnered with Hampton, Sydney, that's helping with our soccer program and youth development. We've, once again, started up, we're starting up swim team in the next month, and we have a large group of swim lessons, both group and private now. So that's where we've gotten back to our foundation. A healthy living, we have 3,600 people that belong to us. That's members, a family member might have five, an individual might have one, of course, but a couple, two, but we have about 3,600 people that we serve every, every month that come through our doors, and they want to live healthy. So if they've had a knee replacement or hip replacement, and they're no longer in therapy, they can come to the why and stay strong. And that's pretty cool, isn't it, to have that continuum of care? We did meet with Centra today about the continuum of care, so that was really awesome. But what we want to do in the why is we want to collaborate. A why and a smaller community. I did come from downtown Nashville, so when I say smaller community, I'm not being condescending at all. It has to reflect the community, and it can't survive without the collaboration of the community, without the support. What do you need? What can we do to help you? Without grants, without, you know, fundraising, since we gave $66,000 away in scholarship cluster to people that couldn't afford to do programming. So I'm just here to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for supporting the why, both with your time, your treasure, and your talents, because we need your support and able to be able to do the work that we feel like God's called us to do. So thank you so much, and. Chuck, you have something to say?
Thank you, guys.
My name is Chuck Taylor, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of the Southside Family YMCA. Pleasure to be here. We didn't mean to leave LeAnn Emmert off the list of Board members for the why, so make sure you go for that one. I think, I've been the Chairman for about a year, a little bit less, and I have to tell you that I think it's a wonderful why. I encourage all of you, if you haven't been out there, to please go out and check out the facility and see what it is, because it's a gem, and it's really a jewel when you're trying to present the community to outsiders who might think about moving here or establishing a business here or going to school here or whatever. I think it's a good, strong selling point. The, as Sharon said, our finances are better. They're not perfect by any means, but they're better. And our members' dues make up about 70% of our overhead, and the rest of it comes from benefactors and grants. And I want to particularly thank the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors for their assistance to help us along. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to publicly thank Sharon and Chuck. Over the last few years, we've had a couple really nasty storms that have come through the area. And in both occasions, the why has stepped up and offered residents of our community who weren't members the opportunity to come in, take a shower, feel human again when their power's been out for four, five, six, seven days. So that's an important thing for us. We appreciate that service that you provided. And again, Sharon, we've been talking about some type of employment wellness program and trying to see if we can work something out for memberships, so we'll be in touch with you. OK?
And you know, that part of helping the community, we have showers, and we have places that you can plug your phone in and, you know, you have food if you need to. So that's the why, social responsibility, and it is our responsibility to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just offer that, you know, if you go into the why, like I do several times a week at an obscenely early hour, I'll be there in a few hours from now, you see Farmville. I mean, you see Prince Edward. You don't, they're not a bunch of people prancing around in fancy fitness outfits. I mean, you know, a healthy percentage of the people on treadmills are wearing jeans. You know, it's, it's, it's everybody, you know, and it's, it makes you feel good. And those two ladies at the front, early in the morning, are perfect. I mean, they're, they're very welcoming and a lot of fun. And not too aggressive for me at 6 o'clock in the morning when I don't, they're really good.
We do have a senior health care tomorrow, and I meant to say that. And we have a lot of community members that will be presented by, we have someone that has hearing aids that can figure out how to fix them with your phone, and we have some insurance companies, and we have flu shots and COVID shots and everything, and I think some people with blood pressures and all that as well. So if you have somewhere that you don't have to be from 8:30 to 11:30, please come by and see us, OK? We'll grab you a free castletry trial. All right?
Thank you.
Next, Madam Chair, we have Commonwealth Regional Council. We have Kristin Jackson, who is the new, I'll say kind of new, Executive Director. I think, is this your first time officially coming to us, Kristin?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. As, as Mr. Stanley said, I'm Kristin Jackson. I'm from Charlotte County, and I joined the Commonwealth Regional Council's team in May, I think when they heard about Melody Foster getting ready to retire. And so anyway, I got to get in there a couple months before she was gone and took over officially as the Executive Director, July 1st. So, but anyway, it's been very exciting, and everybody's been very welcoming. So it's been a wonderful experience so far, but it's been very busy. And really, I should have jumped in with Elsa, because one of the first things that, that I got thrown into right when we started was helping establish the Verita, as we call it, the Virginia Heartlands Regional Economic Development Alliance. And anyway, we do have six of the seven counties involved, but it's also one of the big pushes, as Elsa's already said, is we, we are trying to focus on the businesses that are here. So, you know, we have a whole private side, and she, with Letterpress, was one of our first investors on the private side, so thank you, and we appreciate that support. But we also have so much of the, of different privates as well, because we have, like, Centra Southside, we have Benchmark Bank, we have Bank of Charlotte County and Citizens Bank, and then Southside Electric. We've got Dominion Energy. So we have a whole, you know, we have, we have other smaller businesses. We have an accounting agency, we have a hotel, Hotelier, or however, however they like to call themselves. But anyway, it's been very exciting, but we also have the education side. So Longwood University is a partner, Southside Virginia Community College is a partner, and to represent K through 12, Chip had to sit down from the Chamber so he could come on to Airborne. So he is, he is dedicating his time, too. And that's the thing, we want to see this region grow from, from our young people all the way up, and keeping people in this, you know, in this region is one of the things that, you know, we hear over and over, that, you know, students are growing up, they're getting educated, but they're going on somewhere else. So we want to give them a reason to stay here, and we want to help those primary businesses that have been here forever and helped, you know, and been our foundation. We want to help them grow as well. And of course, we love to see new, big business come, but our focus is going to be a lot on the businesses that are here. So that's the big difference in that. And thus far, we have a Board of Directors, you know, we've got the elected officers, we have bylaws, and we've been working with Gary Elder to get in our 501(c)(3) for that agency. So it's coming right along. And now, be on the lookout, we're establishing, we want the new Executive Director to come on board, so we've established a job description. We've got a meeting this week to approve that, and we're going to have that out and about very shortly, because we want to get this off the ground and get a leader to have, to be the face of this new organization for our region. Some of the other things that have been going on, trainings we've offered here lately. We have a nice office right in the Heartland Business, Regional Business Alliance, and we've been doing, we did a FOIA training and EVA procurement training in our office recently. And, you know, so we, we're open to any ideas. We've had somebody say, how about cybersecurity? So I've looked into some of that, you know, and we love to hear things that maybe your organizations or your, your local county would like to have some types of training. We have a nice facility for some training there, and we'd love to be that service to you guys. One of the other things that I've been working on since I've started, and of course, they've been doing it for years, I looked into how much the Commonwealth Regional Council actually has helped our counties around here. And Prince Edward County alone, in the last five years, Commonwealth Regional Council has, has actually partnered with them for about $15.2 million worth of grants, like helping write, helping administer, working with them, and that's for Prince Edward County, but also regionally, that Prince Edward was part of, there's another, like, $6.9 million in the past five years. And this year alone, we're working right now on about $1.4 million, just between the fire departments, Tree Left, but he's been working with me on some, on some grants, and the hit park, and then the cannery even. We got a nice grant to get the cannery, keep that business going and expanding. So again, just exciting things happening in our region. And then just a final note, we are kicking off a collaborative program with Prince Edward. Prince Edward is the lead county of our seven counties to expand our broadband. It's, we're writing a broadband affordability and expansion adoption plan. And basically, we will be having, we had a kickoff meeting last week. We will be having meetings in all seven of the counties. And the idea behind it is, you know, eventually, we're going to get all this broadband laid, so we'll have all the fiber laid. And after that, what do we need to do to make sure people can afford to use it? And if they can afford to use it, do they know how to use it? Can they use it for telehealth? Can they use it for education? Can they get jobs at home, but still stay here in the county, but be able to work virtually if they have a good internet system? And so that's kind of what we're looking into. We're looking into any barriers that we have, that's going to be addressed in the plan. But then we want implementation ideas. So we're going to be reaching out and listening to everybody's ideas. And the state's big, this plan will go into the, to the state, and the state is going to take these plans into consideration when the next grant funding comes down to help expand and run these implementation programs. So, so getting, you know, your ideas into this plan is going to be crucial to help get funding into our region to help us. So I'm very excited to be able to be on the team that's getting that going as well. So anyway, just a quick thank you for letting me be here and giving me this great opportunity, and I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with all of you. And if anyone needs me, I think you pretty much all know how to get to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krist.
Next, we have Highway Matters with Scott Frederick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and County Administrator. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. Give you a brief update on the highways in the county. Last week and through the weekend was a big effort to respond to everything that was damaged by Hurricane Helene. We worked through the weekend to make sure that we touched all of our gravel roads. We reclaimed a lot of the stone that was washed off and added stone where we needed to, and we're machining them, getting them back usable again by the citizens of the county. As water receded, we inspected and reopened roadways that had bridges on them. If the bridge deck goes underwater, we have to have a bridge inspection before it can be opened back up. So we were able to get through all that. There is a lot of debris in our culverts because of the, you know, the high water comes up in the woods, washes everything downstream, and it tends to clog in our structures. So we're still working through getting the stuff out of the inlets, and we'll continue to do that till we're finished. We're wrapping up mowing on our secondary roots right now. Because of the pollinators, we can't cut back the right-of-ways on primaries where it's real wide. We have to leave certain areas until the fall of the year, once the bees and butterflies have done their thing. So we're going to start October 15th, the full cutback, cleaning everything up for the year, like, everything that's movable. We're also, soon in the month of October, we're going to be working through a dry run on our snow equipment, making sure it's all ready and usable for this coming winter. Hopefully, we don't need any of it, but we'll be ready. Snow is a 24/7/365 thing at VDOT. We're always in some form or fashion of getting ready for the winter. And then just one final update for the night. This winter, you'll also see us working on Rice Creek Junction Canal and Quail Crossing Road. Those are all on the six-year plan for being turned from a gravel road into a hard-surface road. So through the winter, we'll cut the brush back, we'll work on the drainage, new pipes where they're needed. We'll put the base stone down, and in the springtime, we'll be ready to shoot surfaces on those three roads. So that's all I have as far as an update for the Board tonight. Yes, sir?
A quick question. Regarding the inspection of the bridges, if the, which the bridge head goes underwater.
The bridge deck.
Bridge deck goes underwater. How many people are doing that job, and how, how long can that take? It's a lengthy process.
Well, they, they basically go into working overtime. We got, so, bridge inspections all done out of Lynchburg District. I don't know the exact number of inspectors they have, but they basically work, they get around to everything that needs to. Our guys in the headquarters are monitoring water levels, and as they go down, they say, this one's ready to look at, that one's ready to look at. So they just make their way around. There's 10 counties that they covered, but there's a handful of them. They're real easy to work with to get them out and look at it. It's a, it's a big response. In a flooding event that's such widespread flooding, it's, it's a big event.
Is water level monitored now by electronics? I see on the Buffalo, there's a new box that's been mounted there.
On that one, I think the answer to your question is yes. VDOT doesn't do it. We, we do give permits to people that want to install that type of equipment. So I think that's like a USGS box there.
I will say that, and I think, I don't know if they reached out to VDOT yet. I think that National Weather Service and HEEDM are looking to try and install a new river gauge on the bridge there on 608.
OK.
Because I think everyone wants more advanced warning of what might hit Farmville.
OK.
And that's probably the next best bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
There's been some discussion, I don't know if it's reached the residency yet.
Not yet, but I, yeah, I'll be, I guess, we're certainly open to anything that they need to do, so we'll work with them on that. Yes, ma'am.
It's usually a harbinger of what's going to happen downstream.
Yeah. And I think it was two to three years ago, 2021, the flooding, we got, I think, 11 inches of rain or something in Appomattox County, and it all came down. Yes, so you could almost see it coming. Well, I guess.
Scott, if you would ask VDOT to check on the mediums between, I would say between 15 and Pamplin, the dead trees and things, I know they had a bad accident there probably two weeks ago when the truck and trailer hit that tree. And I think they had just taken one down about a week before that, almost side by side. If you would, I, I noticed one, one dead one last week.
Okay, yes, sir. We'll, we'll certainly work to take a look in that area, make sure anything we can get down that's dead and threatening, we will. That tree that did fall, I was concerned, you know, was it dead? What happened? It was like a calm day, and it fell. And it actually had leaves on it, but the roots were rotten, and it, there was no evidence ahead of time that it would have come down. And, and real similarly, down in Charlotte County, we had the same thing occur on Route 40.
Also, if you, if you checked the shoulders west of Forest, west of the town of Farmville, in front of Ellington Pump and Pantry, and in front of where Eggleton's Mobile Homes used to be, that every time we're having a heavy rain, looks like that the shoulders...
Shoulders are high right there. Yes, sir. I saw that last, last time I went through there. So, we'll get, we'll get those clips.
If they could shave those, shave them and let, let the water run out of the road, it's ponded right there in the middle of the road, rather than going in their ditch line.
Yes, sir.
Big problem, we get to freezing weather. Huge problem when you stop the truck.
I don't know whether VDOT can do anything about it. Then I was telling you about the coves being stocked up, that whole flat stretch across there. Several years ago, beavers got up west and made a terrible mess. And that road's been underwater twice this year.
I agree. You think they're back in that area?
I think they're back in there.
Okay. I do know, our central office does have that service contracted out. I've, I've never had to reach out and use it, so maybe I'll get in touch with them. And it, I think it depends on if they're like right there at the road, or, it sounds like these ones are downstream.
They're upstream.
Okay. So, certainly worth taking a look into.
Scott, go ahead, Doug.
You just don't have any issue much unless they're back in there.
Okay.
And when it fills up, it just runs over top of it. Excuse me, Jerry.
No, you kind of excuse me. Oak Grove, did y'all do the thing with that road? Didn't look like it to me when I went down it Saturday.
Saturday? Well, that's probably after all this storm. They did, they did machine it, and I think they added some stone to it right after you asked the last time. I'll have to double check on that.
They did what?
I think they added a little stone and machined the road with a grader. I'll double check. If, I did talk to them about it.
Didn't, didn't, didn't look like it, but...
Yes, sir.
Also, on Verso Road, just before you get to the convenience site, in the curve, the water is still starting to build back up and coming into the road, middle of the road.
On Verso?
Yeah, right in the curve, just before you go, get to the...
Okay.
I probably could, I, I need to get the 911 close to where the old ball field used to be.
Okay.
It used, it, it used to just drain, had it, had it fixed real well, very well. But now, it's making this, got stopped up and the water is coming in the road.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else?
I'll give you a phone call tomorrow maybe. I got a hold of this.
Okay. I look forward to that.
Tomorrow I call you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank you for sending the representative out for my town hall meeting. And of course, questions came up again about Mills Scott Road.
Mills Scott.
They come up. And, you know, sometimes I think individuals think that I may not bring it up, but I'll always bring up that road. It's not but so long. And the question comes up, study is done, to see how much traffic is on the road. Well, there's not that many people on the road. You always come up with 30 people. And we said, if any amount of money is left from some, you know, some part, maybe you can do something with the road. All of that road construction that was done this spring to, you know, in front of Mercy City Church and all that area, all that money. And I know you might not, could have contributed anything from that part, but you know, those people are upset, and they have been promised things for years and years on this little stretch of road. So, if it, if you ever have any part of money left, consider that road, because you never, you're not going to have 50 people travel on there daily, because there's not that many people on it.
Yes, ma'am. I, I will keep it in mind. And Doug's always encouraging me to find ways to find money for the county. So, if we ever get that opportunity, we'll, we'll keep it in mind. It's, it's come up a lot.
Yeah.
So, it stays on my mind as well.
We, we need about two or three more houses back there. There's some vacant lots. We need...
Yeah, and you mentioned vacant lots, but you know, you can't make people go live out there. But these are hard taxpaying people. They do so well, and I think they deserve some kind of consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Don't forget Oak Grove, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Chan.
I got to go.
And don't take, don't take it from mud dusty either.
Exactly right. That's my next one. I feel so sorry for those people. Thank you, sir.
Be careful, I'll slip another one in on you.
Let move.
We've got a public here, and Madam Chair, Cheryl, you want to do the intro on this? Sir, can you check and see if anybody signed up outside?
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
As the board is aware, the Prince Edward County Public Schools is requesting a carryover appropriation totaling $905,976.56 of state funds for the 2024-2025 school year. Prior to the expenditure, in accordance with 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, the board will hold a public hearing to increase the FY25 county and school budgets, accepting the distribution of the funds and appropriating the funds for the FY25 county and school budgets. Attached is a copy of the school's request for appropriation of additional funds that represents the plan of expenditures. There is no local match required for this appropriation. Attachments include the public hearing notice and the school letter.
If I could just add, Madam Chair, I inquired with Mr. Virginia Jones about, again, trying to get specifics, and there's three major categories here. Providing stipends to existing employees to communicate with employees on absenteeism, local community resources, tutoring service, which is the predominant portion of it. So, that's payment for staff and community members who are providing tutoring services for students in the school system. And then, 13 teachers will be paid for after work and summer hours to create a division-wide literacy program. Certainly, literacy is one of the issues we're falling short on as far as our SOL test. So, I think they're trying to put some extra effort into that as well.
I will now open a public hearing. No one has signed up. Is there someone in the audience who would care to speak? Seeing and hearing done, I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Doug, that was for tutoring. And what else did you say?
So, the three areas, providing a stipend to existing employees to communicate with employees on absenteeism and local community resources. They're really trying to address the absenteeism issue. Tutoring services, that's payment to staff and community members for tutoring outside of normal school hours. And then, they had 13 teachers being paid for after work and summer hours to create a division-wide literacy plan.
That's carryover from, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
This is, I'll say, not our local carryover dollars. We won't have that until we get to the...
This...
You can share that, yeah. After audit is when we would consider those types of things.
I don't begrudge them what they're, what they're paying. $900,000 is a whole lot of extra money for tutoring and whatever real sense.
If you look at the detail there, it's, and it's amazingly adds up, but it's $20 an hour during the day for community members and $30 an hour to tutor during the day for staff.
And how, how many teachers did you say tutored they had?
It's not defined. There's, that's 70% of the funding, that's almost $600,000 of the funding, going out at 20 and $3 an hour.
You'd better off to hire some new teachers. At $45,000, that's 20 new teachers. $50,000, that's 18. $60,000, that's 15.
Don't disagree. Part of the problem is, you're only guaranteeing it for that one year, because that's all you've really got the money for. I think that's part of the problem.
No, I was, I was just saying that that's, that adds up to 15 extra teachers that would cover that. If you, if you cut it back to five extra teachers, that's four years at $65,000 we're guaranteed. That's just a whole lot of money to, I'm not saying that they don't need it, but that's $900,000 to be split up for tutoring is a peep out load of money. Tutoring and, you said... And absenteeism. Absenteeism. And what is, there was a third category.
The third category was working on literacy plan for next year.
And that's what...
After hours and during the summer.
You said this is not, these are not local funds?
These are not local funds. State.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead and prove it.
I like the idea of being able to give a teacher a vote. I'll second it.
It's been motion and properly second. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Mr. Cooper Jones.
All right.
The first item on the finance agenda is the FY25 appropriations for sheriff reimbursement. The sheriff's department has received a donation towards animal care in the amount of $100 and a refund in the amount of $290 for class reimbursement. The board is asked to appropriate the funds as follows.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Next is national opioids settlement funds. In September, Prince Edward County received funds totaling $7,876.98 from the opioid settlement fund trust. These funds are required to be used for opioid remediation. The board is asked to appropriate the funds as follows.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
And the, next to the last item I have for you is FY25 PECPS committed funds appropriation. The county received invoices totaling $685,642.48 for the Prince Edward County Elementary School mobile classrooms and renovations. The PECPS capital improvement committed fund available balance is currently $509,694.97. The board is asked to carry over the FY25, FY, sorry, FY24 meals tax balance, $100,540.16 designated for the school CIP, and transfer the remaining balance of $509,694.97 from the PECPS capital improvement committed funds to the school CIP line within the general fund to help cover these in future expenses. This will leave an appropriated balance of $113,454.80 on hand for future expenses.
Bill that's already been made, so I'm going to say that we should pay it. Just a second. They already didn't get the mobile classroom.
It's been motion and properly second. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
And the last item I have for you is in the table pack, page 173, appropriation for the registrar reimbursement. It says, "The registrar's office received reimbursement for the costs associated with the recount from Bob Good for Congress in the amount of $5,223.33. The board is asked to appropriate as follows."
So moved. Second?
Moved and properly second. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, on page 149, we are asking the board to do the annual authorization to post all county property for no hunting, and the properties are listed there for you.
So moved.
It's been motion and properly second. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Chair, is item 15, VACO voting credentials. We've got the upcoming Virginia Association of Counties Annual Meeting coming up on November 10th through 12th. The board will wish to designate its voting delegate and alternate for the VACO annual business meeting. Historically, the board has designated the chair as the voting delegate and the vice chair as the alternate delegate, depending on who is attending VACO. Both of those individuals will be in attendance this year. So, that would be staff recommendation. But obviously, if somebody else wanted, I'm sure Patty, but let it go.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Has been moved and properly second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryt?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Next, Ms. Terry Atkins Wilson.
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Stanley.
Good evening.
The month has flown by once again. And anyway, we've, I feel like the majority of my time probably is working with, with the IDA, working on some paperwork for, for the IDA, which, you know, in the long run, helps the county. So, anyway, we also have, we did have a, a report of a, a claim against us, but as many of you know, folks can make a claim, but I don't think that it's anything that's going to amount to anything. It was a private transport accident, admitted that the driver was at fault. So, we've turned that over. And anyway, I, I don't think there's anything, you know, to be concerned about as far as the county. As you recall, last month, Judge Blessing came for, talked about the recovery court. We've been working on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for that recovery court. Mr. Stanley's provided us some, got some examples, and then they have also submitted a draft, so we're working on, on that. Working on some, some lease, lease information around the county landfill. And anyway, I think that's the big picture of everything. If they may have any questions or concerns. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, a few items. One, I am happy to report that our 2024 tax bills have been mailed out. Congratulations to both the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer for getting their job done one time this year. We, like the last two years, we were able to include a copy of the county's 2024 Annual Report, which reports on activities for the county for the year or so. We think that'll get a good reception. Work is completed this past month by a local Amish contractor helping to repoint the visitor's center. A lot of our mortar in the visitor's center had become soft and was basically turning to sand, based on the age of the facility. That work, along with the installation of the new awning, had greatly improved the appearance of the visitor's center. Courthouse lawn took a beating with the heat this year and the drought. We had it aerated, fertilized, overseeded, and put down some mushroom compost, and it's really starting to green back up and fill in. I am pleased to report that we will have our first household hazardous cleanup day on October 19 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the backlot behind the courthouse. Individual residents will be able to bring in items like cleaners, solvents, paints, batteries, different things that they have around the house that really should not be disposed of at our landfill, but because there is no option, I'm sure some of that stuff makes its way to the landfill. We've got a full listing, I think, on Facebook. It's, Sarah, you've got an ad coming in the paper? You've got a flyer. So please tell your constituents, we've gotten lots of calls over the last few years asking about, you know, where do I take these batteries that were in my, you know, electronic instrument? This is it. This is your fluorescent bulbs, all this type of stuff. This is the proper place to get rid of it. Our staff will be on hand, we'll have some open tops to deal with some of the material. We've got a consultant that'll be running the show, they do this in other localities. So, yeah, help us get the word out, and we look forward to having a successful event. Our SLF landfill project, our Properties Committee met on September 26 to review options for addressing issues associated with the construction of SLF. Committee approved acceptance of a change order in the amount of $62,350 for the extra three-foot excavation and a change order in the amount of $68,000 for a rain flap.
That's way less money.
It's way less money. It's a, it's an alternative method to address the issue. And the rain flap, again, it ended up being about one-third of the cost of the proposed rain bonnet. So total change orders now are at $130,406, or about 8.2%, well below the 17% we discussed at last month's meeting, and that should allow us to complete the project. I think the berms have already been installed and material, so we're rolling on. Elementary school, as reported, bids came in higher than expected estimated last year, but the window of the authorized bond agreement approved by the board at September 10th meeting covered that amount. I'm gonna pass out, pass down here a copy. Jimmy Sanderson in Davenport provided me this comparison. So, column one was where we were anticipating case A and B, where the two estimates that we had, whether or not we got state grant funding or not, we ended up getting state grant funding. I think the bottom shows you the penny impact, but if you look at the debt service, we're actually, before, we were looking at trying to pay interest only till 2032 on that first case, and now we're gonna be able to start paying principal upfront with the let-loan bond. So the actual amount of debt service we end up paying is gonna end up being less. And of course, the other thing, that's the penny impact, we don't know is what kind of other economic development activities we'll have. Anything we do between now and 2029 can help lessen the blow when we get to that point in time, but, you know, it's, the lower interest rates, getting that 3% let loan, and tomorrow the VPSA bonds go to sale, and I think the estimate's around 3.9%, so that's where we're estimating. So lower interest rates have helped offset the higher construction costs and the bids that came in. And I'll be happy to answer any questions either now or, you know, moving down the line. We also got word this past week that PJM, which handles transmission for the electric industry, I met with Dominion last week. PJM is planning to upgrade the transmission grid in the region to meet growing energy demands. According to Dominion, they're planning to build a 765 KV line to a 230 KV line, somewhere in there, so it could be at the high-end 765, which is obviously bigger than a 500, it carries about twice the electricity, to tie into the Clover facility and solar projects to our south to meet the growing electric demand. If located in the right direction, it obviously could help us recruit potential users of our data center site, because power is one of those key limiting factors for their development. But the final line location could have a negative impact on the county and its residents. We'll continue to monitor the information they put out. At this point in time, I think we're not really anticipating a significant amount of that line to be located in Prince Edward proper, but again, we'll keep an eye on it. Upcoming board engagement opportunities, there's a vaccination clinic at the Southside YMCA on the 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Again, the household hazardous waste, if some of y'all want to come out that morning while we're taking waste in, you're certainly welcome to be there and meet your constituents. We've got our joint board, Plan Commission Work Session coming up, I'll leave on the 23rd, so make sure that's on your calendar. We'll be talking land use, and we're about halfway done with the comp plan, and based on current timing, we're hoping to be able to put that out to a public hearing next spring. And lastly, we had to reschedule our joint meeting with council. I think we're looking at November 19, so please look at your calendars. We don't have to have everybody, I'd love to have everybody if we can make it. The council was looking at that week of the 19th, so if you have any issues, let me know. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
What was October 23rd? I think it's Plan Commission.
Joint Work Session.
I will turn the board's attention to page 175, item 21 in your table pack. So at its August meeting, the board had asked staff to contact the members of the 2021 Board of Equalization to determine their willingness to return, and if not, to bring to the board recommendations to fill those vacancies. We did contact all of the members. There were two that said that they were retiring from service, so we're very pleased to have been able to fill those two vacancies with two citizens who we know will fill those vacancies and provide excellent service to the citizens of Prince Edward County for this very important, I'm gonna say, post-assessment or post-reassessment year. And so for the 2025, staff recommends the following slate of citizens for the board to consider recommending to the Circuit Court, and they are Russell Dove, Bob Timmons, Gene Watson, Cheryl Worley, and Joyce Yates. Prior to them actually taking office, they have to each complete a basic course of instruction provided by the Virginia Department of Taxation. We bring everybody together and... Did I tell you that, Joyce? I may have neglected that. We'll bring everybody together for a few hours, and the Department of Taxation goes over the laws and the process, and we've been very fortunate, I think this is my third or fourth reassessment that I've, I'm gonna say, kind of been involved in administratively, and we're very fortunate to have the citizens who provide the service that they do to the rest of the citizens in the county. So with the board's consent...
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pry?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, item 22, county gateway signage on page 177. Back in February 23, the board approved a contract with Fraser and Associates to help us plan and develop a wave-finding signage program for the county. The goal was to develop a program similar to the Towns program and one that would be complimentary as far as kind of design and colors. Program is being, the project is being paid for in part with Virginia Tourism Commission ARPA grant, and over the past year and a half, staff and county tourism commission have been working with consultants to design the various signs and identify destinations that would qualify within the community that will make up the program. First phase of the project is proposed to upgrade the existing entrance signs into the community. In your packet, you've got a copy of the design for the proposed entrance signs. Much thought has gone into the masonry, the colors, the kind of undercarriage, I call it, that looks like the hybrid's trail, to try to come up with something that's attractive as you come into the community. In discussing a project with VDOT, one of the items that we need to address are the existing county monument signs that were installed in the 1980s. These signs are the Black Buckingham Slate signs that, I'll say, look like a headstone, but a lot of counties around the region have those, a lot of businesses over in Buckingham. This time, we're asking the board, as part of the installation of the new signage, that the existing gateway signs be removed and placed in storage for future use. Part of this is, we want to put the new signs, because we already got space that's dedicated for those signs, we can utilize that same space without having to acquire an additional right-of-way or easements from adjoining property owners. But I also realize, I think, Sarah, do you remember when those went in originally?
Let me say, 98, no, 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 98.
No, it was the 90s, okay. So a copy of the, you know, the overall signage program and some of the gateway signs are in your packet. With that, be happy to answer any questions, but we are at that stage of kind of having to negotiate with VDOT on the locations and the proximity to the highway.
I'll say 98 was a long time ago. I wasn't alive.
It wasn't very long ago.
I got clothing older than that.
Well, I think the entrance signs look really nice.
Yeah, I love those.
I like, I think they look really nice.
Yeah.
Very eye-catching.
Pretty, Harrison.
So you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Mr. Gillum?
How many of these signs are we talking about?
I think on, I'll tell you, it's on page, hold on a second here, 188. I think there's five locations we're talking about. You've got 460 coming in at Pamplin, one coming down 15 from Buckingham, E.307 there at 460 on the county line, and one at 15 South.
Yeah, 15 South.
Yeah.
And what is the cost per sign?
Until we, we gotta, we gotta put it out to bid. I put in there that we've gotten, you know, we've got about almost $170,000 put aside from tourism dollars, that's what it's paying for, unless we can identify some grant money, but based on the cost, we'll have to come back to the board to approve the construction cost, because I doubt it's gonna be under $20,000, so. Y'all see that again.
Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Pry?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
I think that's all. Sarah, do you got anything else? I think, I think we're good.
We're good. Okay, board, that concludes our business at hand, unless you have...
Yeah, quick question. I got a phone call from some individuals today who's asking about the tax, they got their taxes. Is farm equipment taxed?
I don't believe it should. I think it's, I believe that's exempted.
Okay.
Yeah.
He was, he just asked, and I told him that I would, we had a meeting tonight, and I would ask and go from there.
There's a class, there is a class of property, but I'm pretty sure the board sets that at zero.
Right. I don't need to know.
Make a motion to a juror?
Second.
Have a motion, and it has been properly second. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pry?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.